Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for March 16th, 2021. Item number one, if we could please call the roll, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras.
I'm here.
Thank you. Counselor Brennan?
Here.
Counselor Whiting?
Here.
Counselor Lehman?
Here.
Mayor Mars?
Here. Thank you all. Item number two, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number two, or item number three, excuse me, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, corrections, Mr. Reynolds?
There is one change, Mr. Mayor. On the consent agenda, we will be removing 4D4, dealing with the SCADA upgrades, and you will actually see that then at our next council meeting.
Thank you very much. Counselor Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended, a consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Brennan. Further discussion? Discussion, Counselor Lehman?
We approving the agenda or the?
Yeah, it is the agenda, sorry.
The agenda with 4D4 pulled, and we'll see that at a later date. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. Thank you very much. The amended agenda has been approved. Moving ahead to consent agenda. Are there any changes, corrections, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing further, sir.
Thank you. Counselor Whiting?
I'll try it again. I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. If there's no questions, we would read, I have a motion on the table, and a second before we vote, we would read the consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for 16 March of 2021. 4A1 approves the city council meeting minutes for 2 March of 2021. 4B1 awards a contract for the community center cardio equipment under the same terms as the previous contract, including a one-time payment of $9,281.53. 4B2 approves the 2021 concession agreements with the Shakopee Soccer Association, Shakopee Indian Baseball, Shakopee Coyote Baseball, and the Shakopee Youth Hockey Association. 4C1 approves the request to apply for a partnership with Great River Greening for the Sweeney Marina. 4C2 adopts resolution number R2021-TAC-034, which approves the application for the 2021 DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant. 4C3 adopts resolution R2021-TAC-038, which approves the requested registered land survey for the former train depot property. 4C4 adopts resolution number R2021-TAC-046, which approves the final plat of South Bridge Crossing Apartments, Second Edition. 4D1 adopts resolution R2021-TAC-032, which approves plans and specifications and orders advertisement for bids for the 2021 Batuminous Pavement Rehab Projects. 4D2 adopts resolution number R2021-TAC-030, which approves plans and specifications and orders advertisement for bids for the 2021 Alley Recon Project. 4D3 adopts resolution number R2021-TAC-030, which receives a feasibility report and calls for a public hearing for the utility extensions at Marist Street, 13th Avenue, and Hanson Avenue. 4D5 adopts resolution R2021-TAC-033, which approves the application for the 2021 Minnesota DNR Local Trail Connections Grant for the Marystown Road Trail. 4D6 adopts resolution R2021-TAC-042, which approves the application for the 2021 Minnesota Pollution Control Agency Alternative Landscaping Equipment Grant. 4D7 awards a contract for $201,909.50 to Pathfinder Trail Building for the construction of the Quarry Lake Mountain Bike Trail. And 4D8 adopts resolution 2021-TAC-047, which amends the Public Works Department Engineering Division budget in the amount of $100,000 for the addition of a graduate engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. The consent agenda has been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion. By voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. The consent agenda has been approved. Thank you very much. Item number five, now I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward, make comment on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome on an item not on the agenda. Have we received any electronic communication, Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir, we have not.
Then with that, there looks like there's no, no one that wants to come forward on an item not on the agenda. We would move forward then. Item number six, items removed from consent. There were none. We would move right ahead into our public hearings. We have three of them tonight. Start with 7A, Vacation of a Public Drainage and Utility Easement. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I make a motion to open a public hearing.
I can, but Contreras.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. The public hearing is now open, and Mr. Kurski will present.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So this is a public hearing for the vacation of public drainage and utility easements as dedicated within the Windermere Edition and Windermere South, Second Edition. These are the three specific easements that will be vacated. One on the corner by Astoria Drive, one by Attenborough Court, and then one off of 17th Avenue West. Dr. Horton is requesting the vacation of these easements for Outlet E and F in Windermere, and Outlet A, Outlet B, or Windermere South, Second Edition, located off 17th Avenue, Windermere Way, and Attenborough Street. Proposed development requires a new plat. Submit in conjunction with the vacation of these public easements, which you'll see later this evening. If approved, the proposed plat will incorporate new public right-of-way easements consistent with the city and utility requirements. So this is Outlet F, and the easement that's along 17th Avenue, and then these are the two outlets with the easements attached in that will be vacated.
Thank you. Mr. Kurski, questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, what was the original intent of the current easements?
Mayor and council, those were set up originally as outlets. You'll see later on the agenda tonight, and they're no longer going to be outlets. They're actually going to be platted, so as part of the new plat, we'll have new easements.
Okay, thanks. And Mayor, follow-up?
Yes.
Um, thanks to staff for putting in condition number two, which says that the vacation will be contingent on new easements be granted with the new plat, so appreciate that in there.
Mayor and council, Mr. Lehman, you brought that up several times, so I've asked staff now to include that in all future resolutions.
Appreciate it.
We're always assured if we vacate, then on some of these, that we get them back at plat. Further questions of staff? Further questions of staff? This is a public hearing. Would the applicant or their representative like to come forward and make comment on this? This is a public hearing. Would anybody else like to come forward and make comment on this vacation? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none?
I make a motion to close the public.
Counselor Lehman?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. The motion passes. The public hearing is now closed. How would you like to proceed? Counselor Brennan?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number R2021-036, a resolution approving the vacation of public drainage and utility easements as dedicated within Outlet E and Outlet F, Windermere and Outlet A and Outlet B, Windermere South, Second Edition, located off 17th Avenue, Windermere Way, and Attenborough Street.
Second, my Contreras.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. That motion passes for that vacation. Let's move ahead to our second public hearing. 7B, a vacation of public drainage and utility easements as dedicated with the Howe First Edition. Counselor Whiting?
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
Counselor Lehman?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. The public hearing is now open, and Mr. Kurski will present.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is the public hearing for a vacation of public drainage and utility easements as dedicated within the Howe First Edition. This is the particular parcel. This is the current location for Microsource, which is owned by Gavilon. Microsource is a company within that company. You'll see later this evening, there's a new plat, and our city attorney worked with the attorneys from Gavilon to figure out how to make this all work. So these are the actual easements that are going to be vacated this evening, and you'll see later, there's a new plat with new right-of-way and new drainage and utility easements, and a new parcel that's actually being attached onto this parcel. So Cree Techs Industrial Park, LSC, and Gavilon Fertilizer have requested the city to approve this vacation. A proposed development of this property requires a new plat in conjunction with this vacation, and if approved, the new plat will incorporate new public right-of-way easements consistent with the city and utility requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, or thank you, Mr. Kurski, excuse me. Questions of staff? Questions of staff? I see the condition now, number one, in the resolution that says that it's, this vacation is contingent on getting the easements on the final plat. Further discussion or questions of staff? Seeing none. This is a public hearing. Would the representative or the developer like to make comment in regard to their, this request? Seeing none, then? This is a public hearing. Would anybody else like to come forward and make comment in regard to this application? Seeing none. Counselor Lehman?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close a public hearing. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. Public hearing is now closed. Counselors, Counselor Brennan?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number R2021-037, a resolution approving the vacation of public drainage and utility easements as dedicated within Howe First Edition, located south of Stagecoach Road at Connie Road Highway number 101.
Thank you.
Second, Contreras.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. That vacation passes. Thank you all very much. Moving ahead to 7C, public hearing for housing revenue bonds for the Shakopee Housing Partners Limited Partnership for Senior Housing Rehabilitation. Counselor Lehman?
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. The public hearing is now open, and staff will present.
Good evening, Mayor and council. You set this public hearing some time ago. These are for conduit bonds for, as we talked about, his senior housing development. Our bond council, Julie Eddington, is here to do a little introduction, and I believe the partners that will be doing this project are also on this call.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Julie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Julie Eddington. I'm with Kennedy and Graven, and I am the city's bond council. The Vitus Group has purchased a property in the city of Shakopee, and it's rehabbing that property, and has asked for conduit housing bonds from the city, and that's in the amount of approximately $6.8 million. It's important to note that these are, these are conduit bonds. The city is not responsible for paying any of the debt service on these bonds. If there is a problem with the bonds at a later date, the city will not be responsible for anything. The borrower in the loan documents specifically states that if the city does incur any expenses in the future, that you will, that he, that they will reimburse the city for any of those expenses. And lastly, the conduit bonds will not impact the city's ability to issue their own general obligation bonds this year. Housing bonds do not impact the city's bank-qualified GO bonds, so that $10 million that you have to issue bank-qualified bonds this year will be not impacted by the conduit bonds. Brian Maloney is here to talk to any, or answer any questions with respect to the development itself and the work that they have done on the building.
Thank you. Questions of staff or council? Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there a limit on how many revenue bonds, housing revenue bonds, the city can put out or offer?
Uh, council member Lehman, there is not a limit for how many housing bonds a city can issue each year or over time. However, the state of Minnesota has a finite amount of what we call housing allocation. You need to obtain housing allocation from the state before you can issue tax-exup bonds for a housing project. So that is the limitation that we have here in the state of Minnesota, and every state has the same limitation.
Mayor, follow-up?
Yes.
So did, do we apply for that allocation, or does this project apply for that allocation?
Council member Lehman, we came to the city council last fall, and the city council approved the application for housing allocation to the state. The state granted that housing allocation to the project itself in January. So that process has already been completed.
So you're telling me it's to the project?
Right. The city has to apply for it, but it goes to the project itself.
Okay.
Other questions of council? I guess my question is maybe for the developer, Julie, but obviously, this is designed to be an affordable housing rehab project, and so got some allocations for at least 62 years old or disabled, and I just trying to find documentation in the in the packet about, is it at 60% AMI or lower, or?
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like Mr. Maloney to answer that question for you.
Thank you.
He has more details on the project. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. To answer your question, the project has two, will have two rent affordability restrictions on it. As part of our allocation of tax credits from the state of Minnesota, we will agree to keep the project for a minimum of 15 years at 60% AMI. And additionally, since this project is currently subject to a HAB contract, and as part of our, basically as part of our, as part of this transaction, we are doing a renewal of the HAB contract for an additional 20-year terms. And so all we will, the project will meet all the additional income requirements for the HAB contract as well. So there will be two, I guess, two layers or two income requirements the project will meet, so.
Okay, and then a follow-up question, the bond proceeds for rehabilitation. Are these going into the individual units, or is it more for the building?
Um, so I guess the bond proceeds will be spent on, or I guess Frank Hogan, who's also on the call, may be able to answer the overall structure of this transaction, or how the bond proceeds work better than I can, so.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Frank Hogan. I'm with Collier Securities. We're underwriting the bonds, as well as my affiliate company, Collier's Mortgage, is providing the permanent FHA mortgage loan financing on the project. Proceeds of the bonds and the tax credit equity will be used to finance both the acquisition and rehabilitation of the project. And so I think the proceeds will be used, you know, with other project sources for both, both acquisition and renovation. Brian, I think the scope of renovation is fairly comprehensive, over approximately $35,000 a unit that, that, that covers both major building systems as well as internal unit repairs that you covers both major building systems as well as internal unit repairs that you've, you've developed with your architect and contractor in putting together that scope of rehab.
Yes, Frank, that is correct. Our current scope is over $37,000 a door in rehab.
Thirty, over $30,000 a door?
Just over $37,000 a door.
A door. And just to be very specific, is it gonna, those dollars going into the specific units?
Yes. So, yeah, so we, we already own the building, and at the point of this transaction closing, if approved, well, basically, $37,000 a door will be spent on overall improvements of the buildings and the individual units. So at, at the advice of city staff and consultation with the architect and GC, we've decided, just for an example, to include a building fire safety system throughout the building, because there was no existing sprinkler system. So there are both individual cosmetic upgrades to each of the units, such as new cabinetry and new equipment, such as boilers to the building. So overall, our scope of work includes just over $37,000 a door in renovations.
Thank you. Other questions of the developer? Counselor Brennan?
I'm hoping you can answer this. We recently had Section 8 applications available. Are you a Section 8, do you have Section 8 units available for, in this building?
So all of the units in the building are basically for Section 8 tenants. And basically, when units are filled, we pull from our waiting list, because we have a pretty long waiting list at the moment for tenants that are qualified for the Section 8 subsidy and are available to live in the unit. So I guess to answer your question, all of our units are Section 8, and we pull in qualified Section 8 tenants to fill those units when they become vacant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to clarify. You said the bond proceeds were for $37,000 per unit, per door you mentioned. And then also for acquisition of the building? Is this for your, your purchasing of the property as well?
So our bond proceeds are going to be in the amount of $6.85 million is the allocation we've requested. And so that is a source of funds for the project. But the money we are spending on the project is, we purchased the building for $7.1 million back in November 3rd of 2020. And then as part of our rehabilitation, we are going to spend an additional $37,000 a door to improve the property.
Thank you. And like you mentioned, see for seniors and low and moderate income Section 8 type funding, and I appreciate that. We have a lot of need in this community for that type of building. And I am familiar with the building, and it, it needed work. So this is much needed. Thank you.
Other questions of the developer? Counselor Lehman?
So Mayor, of the 6.8 million in housing bonds, are these dollars, are these dollars going partially to purchase this property?
Counselor Lehman, this Frank Hogan, a portion of the proceeds will be used for the, for the acquisition price of the building. Yes, and a portion will be used for, for the renovation as well.
Can you tell us what, what the proportions are?
A little bit approximation here. I think the total development cost is, Brian, just, just over $14 million. That includes a $10 million FHA permanent mortgage. That might be a little bit light there. So I would say, you know, approximately 50% of the proceeds of the bonds will be used for renovation, with the balance being used for the acquisition of the project.
Okay.
Other questions of the developer? If not, this, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Would any resident like to come forward and make comment in regard to this? Have we received any electronic communication, Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir.
All right. Counselor Whiting?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second, my Contreras.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras to close the public hearing. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote. Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. The public hearing is now closed. How would you like to proceed? Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I don't know who to ask this question, but if the project doesn't work out, who's, who's ultimately on the hook?
Julie?
Counselor Member, Counselor Member Lehman, the, the person that's on the, the entity that's on the hook is the developer that's borrowing the money. And if there is a problem, again, the loan documents require Vitus to pay any, pay any money that is due, or if there's a fire, they'll have to handle that through insurance. Any, any issue with the property, whether it be a debt issue or a property issue, the Vitus Group will need to take care of that. The, the city does not have any monetary responsible, responsibility related to the, the bonds themselves.
I understand that part of it. The question is, if they don't, if they don't have the wherewithal to make the payments, what happens?
Counselor Member Lehman, the, there's a, the first mortgage, the permanent first mortgage on the project will be an FHA loan. And the term of that loan is 40 years. Collier's Mortgage is the lender. And ultimately, the federal housing administration is, is guaranteeing payment of that loan for that 40, 40-year period. The bonds themselves are, are short-term in nature and are going to be AAA rated. They're AAA rated by nature of their collateral, their colla, fully collateralized at all times.
So the federal taxpayers is the worst-case scenario? FHA?
Yeah.
Okay.
Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One point is that this is fully backed into AAA rated, is there's a waiting list. It's, income is set. So the bonds are rated because, because it's automatic income. Like I mentioned before, this is project is 62 units preserving the occupancy for seniors and low to moderate income folks in our community. A lot of folks need, that have, and somebody needs to take over, like this company has bought this facility. So with that, a motion to adopt Resolution R 48, authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of multifamily housing revenue bonds for the benefit of Shakopee Housing, Parkers, I think it's Parkers or Partners LP, and authoring execution and delivery of documents related there, too.
A second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras. I think she had her hand up first. Further discussion? To me, this is a pretty good project. We're taking a very older stock in our community and getting it rehabbed. The pass-through bonds are not on the city of Shakopee. It does not seem to be highly leveraged from my aspect. And I think, I think this will bode well for our community. Counselor Brennan?
Yep, this is a, a project that's definitely needed in our community. We had a woman come in a couple months ago talking about the fact that she was a senior and she wasn't able to find affordable housing. So I think this is a great opportunity, and I thank you for the investment into our community.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, was, maybe staff might know the answer to this, but this was an existing subsidized housing prior to what we're talking about tonight at the same location.
Mayor and Council, that's correct. And those contracts kind of roll along and can be modified. The past owner did not, I would say, do a great job of maintenance in the building and somewhat disrepair. So we worked with Vitus Group, for instance, on a senior project, sprinklers are kind of important. So they did agree to sprinkle the entire building, which it is not currently, and also make upgrades to the kitchens so they'd be more up to date and user-friendly.
Further discussion? Further discussion? I have a motion and a second on the table. Further discussion? Discussion by voice vote. Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. This motion passes. Thank you very much. And thank you for investing in our city, in our residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving ahead then to 8A1, our monthly financial review for February 2021. Nate will present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Nate Reinhardt, Finance Director for the city of Shakopee. So tonight I'll be covering our monthly financial review through, through February. We are continuing to work on year-end 2020 numbers and preparing for that audit. We'll likely have our final 2020 audit report at the end of May or early June. But our intention is to provide an update on 2020 financials next month with our almost final numbers. Next slide. This slide shows the general fund through February, so approximately 17% of our way through the year. This early in the year, the numbers can be skewed due to timing differences of one or two large transactions. Beginning with revenues, property taxes and special assessments will be received in June with our first half tax settlement. We are seeing a lot of billing activity through the first two months. Permit revenue is up about $300,000 from where we were last year, and we're currently at 33% of that budgeted amount. The negative that's being shown here in fines and forfeits has to do with the timing of a pass-through to Scott County. That'll be zeroed out with a journal entry, so you won't see that in in future monthly reports. And then on the expenditure side, we are within the budget target in total. And I would consider the departmental budgets, all the departmental budgets reasonably in line with expectations through this point of the year. Next slide. Here is the recreational facility operations budget to actual. Ice Arena revenues are up from the previous year through February. The community center revenues are significantly behind in terms of budget targets and in comparison with the previous year, as we continue to see impacts to the operations as a result of COVID-19. We are at about half the revenues that we saw in the previous year, pre-COVID. So with that, I can stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Counselors, just one minute? Questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
Thanks, Mayor. Are we taking any steps in, uh, community center due to the COVID stuff to reduce expenses as much as possible?
Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Yes, Counselor Lehman, there's been a large reduction in expenses. Approximately a month and a half ago, I sent an email out to council with our estimates at that point. I'll be more than happy to send that out again. And Jay, if you want to comment on that as well?
I, I would like to. We initially had attempted to eliminate the cleaning contract, and then we had one of our maintenance people leave, and so we weren't able to do that as we intended to. So we initially projected a $66,000 savings in the cleaning contract, but, but we aren't realizing that right now because of a shortage of maintenance personnel in order to complete that cleaning. And, and we need to keep the space clean. What we are seeing that's actually interesting is an uptick in membership. So I just got a report today in membership, and that for the month of February, we only lost 30, 39 members, but we gained 112. So I, I don't know exactly how to explain that phenomena. Other than one factor in the region is the YMCA in Prior Lake closed in 2020, and that has increased an uptick in terms of our senior membership. So this might be continued realization of that change in the, in the demographic for our region and people coming in for that. But in terms of reducing the expenses, you, we, we've done a good job of, of keeping staffing down. We've done a hard look at staffing, and we've reduced our staffing costs significantly. And we are also keeping a look at what's happening operationally in terms of the, the increased requirements for cleaning. So Counselor Member Lehman, we're, we continue to look at it every day to make sure that we're being good stewards of that.
And just to follow up, Mayor?
Yes.
I just, I, I know it's difficult when the state puts guidance, guidance out there that you gotta follow, and it changes what you're doing, and then they change it again, and you change back this way, and you're kind of, the ball in the pinball machine going wherever the state's telling you to go. And hopefully, we see some normalcy in the future here, and it, it starts leveling out for us. So it's much easier to plan for you guys. Wishful thinking.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, sir. I, I do want to comment one thing that, that I think was foreshadowing, that has helped us out a lot, the, the reservation system that we're able to put in place is to do two critical things. One is to adjust our numbers pretty transparently as we have those changes in the government's guidance. So then we just, instead of only having 15 reservations, now we can have 20 reservations, or we have to pull that back. So that's, the reservation system has been a huge asset in terms of controlling the numbers that we have in our spaces and our capacity, issues that continue to change. Another thing that's been helpful with the reservation system is when we have had instances of exposure, that allows us to do the necessary contract, contact tracing to report to the Minnesota Department of Health. And so thank you for supporting us in that. That asset has been critical in order to be able to operate in this environment.
Good. Other questions of staff? I guess on the community center, as we move forward here, you know, we're on, March, the one-year anniversary of when this all started, and our impacts at the community center were felt probably the most in the city and our community. And just wondering that we'll have some, as we try to rebuild, as the opening comes closer to us and renewed interest in, in users, wonder how we can display that against 2020 numbers will always be hard, because those comps will be tough. I wonder how if we could shadow 2019 or something to, to really see how, how we're stacking up as we move forward during those compared to the down months last summer and this winter. But congratulations on the membership numbers. And I think, are we going to be able to open a little more on, in April?
Mr. Mayor, contrary to beliefs, the changes that the governor had briefed with the new executive order don't really impact us in the fitness center. It isn't going to impact our ability to do our events. And the reason it doesn't impact us in the fitness center is because we're constrained by just square footage. And with us still have to do the social distancing of six feet, you can only have so many people in a space at six feet apart.
Right.
And so we were already trying to maximize our spaces, so we haven't realized any huge gains in the community center as a result of the executive order. But we are going to anticipate some huge gains in terms of our large events, like the Shakopee Big Taste of Fun in August, that will allow us to go from what was just 250 to potentially 800 people. So we're still calculating what those restrictions So we're still calculating what those restrictions, how they'll impact us, but we anticipate positive things. I also want to put in a plug. The brochure's coming out. If you didn't see that, new brochure, new programs. And all of our programs comply with the current requirements, but also we've got a lot going on in the community. So if you haven't seen the brochure, I'd encourage you to check it out.
Thank you very much. Any further questions on the financial report? Seeing none then, let's move ahead to item number 8A2, our extra meeting pay for council members, our per diem. And Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Staff has reviewed and updated this form. You can tell by the discussion portion, we've taken off the following 169 Mobility Study Policy Advisory Committee, the Ad Hoc Committee Board, the Community Center Select Committee, the Derby Days Committee, the Shakopee Public Utilities Liaison. And we have added the following by request, the Racial Equity Team and the Scale Live, Learn, Earn Housing Committee and the Scale Live, Learn, Earn Transit Committee. In reviewing the past meetings where this was established initially some four years ago, maybe five at this point, I wanted to make sure and added the clarifying language based upon what the determination was at that time. But before I say that, it's important to understand that anything that's on this document, this is all council-driven. So council can determine whatever they want with this. Essentially, I just put this clarification down as well based upon what the original intent was. And that is the following, only one meeting per day is authorized. If you have several meetings on one day, please only annotate your first meeting. And then also noting that although the city does pay for all training and conference fees, extra meeting pay is not authorized for these items. So I present this for council direction as to how you want us to modify the form if all, at all, and then we can have it ready for you for your next submission.
Thank you. Councilors, I know that this certainly has been around for four or five years and there's been issues in the past. And when this came up, we're looking at the form that some, we're trying to streamline it, drop some committees that either don't play a role or no longer exist. You know, this per diem thing, I'm not a big fan of it personally. I would like to see actually the council pay be analyzed and looked for review. It's been many, many years. That would not include the mayor to see where we stand as a city from our size for council salary. But certainly we can, if we got some data over the next many months, we can continue with the per diem. But maybe the better way to look at it would be a possible salary increase for one that, for council members that I don't believe has moved up in maybe 10 years. But just trying to clarify this per diem aspect and let's have a discussion. Counselor Brennan?
Could we possibly have the mileage added onto this form even though I don't know who's driving around nowadays? But so that we just have one form that we need to complete.
This is a per diem form. I believe there's a separate form for for cost going to a conference or mileage. We're all kind of working from home and virtually. But certainly if we go to a League of Minnesota Cities training in the past where you travel out of the city, the city pays for the cost of the classes to the league to sign up for that. Mileage, is that correct, Mr. Reynolds?
That is correct, sir. Yep.
So this is just a per diem. There is a separate mileage, but the idea of per diem versus mileage, if you're collecting a per diem for one of your appointed liaisons, then you wouldn't get mileage. But if you went to a League of Minnesota Cities event out of town, a class, that would qualify for mileage and we would use a different form. Counselor Brennan?
I was just wondering if we could include the two on one form. But if that's not workable, that's okay.
Other comments on this? Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I think this was in fact brought up in lieu of, at the time, raising the mayor's pay. And this was also to include a per diem for the mayor when he's out clipping ribbons too. So this was initially intended a little more expanded, but in the end came to what we decided on in the previous presentation of this. But I don't see, and we did have it as one per diem per day. And I think the adding the, disallowing the mileage, I think would be an important addition because we don't want to double dip on the city for sure. I like the changes that have been made to the form. You know, some Derby Days is no longer with us. I hope if another festival or something came along that the city could be a part of and maybe appoint a liaison, but we're not there yet. So with that, I would recommend just moving forward with the form that's been presented. And we can talk about future of council pay, but I don't think that's a priority in my mind.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I think the mileage reimbursement should be a separate form and then it should have on there what the mileage, what the meeting was so that it could be verified that it was city-related, whether it's, you know, League of Minnesota Cities up in the cities or whatever. So I'd like to see it separate from this. The one issue I would like to bring up with this is one meeting per day, minor back-to-back and it's seven o'clock in the morning until 10 o'clock without any drive time. So if I add a drive time, it's 6:30 to 11:00 and, you know, that's half of my production of my production day at work. And that's a pretty big hit. So I suppose it's easier for me to ask them to break up their meetings and have them two separate days, you know, so I could do that. But I'm not opposed to abolishing this whole thing and not having it completely. I just don't think I have the support from council, so. But I would sure be, I would be in favor of just not having any per diems and just do it because it's what you want to do.
Counselor Brennan?
I'd be okay with that. I don't use the per diem.
Counselor Contreras, do you want to weigh in here?
Thank you. Actually, well, two thoughts. I'm glad to see the form the way it is updated. I know that being part of the equity team, it hadn't been on there for a while, so that was an issue. Not an issue, it's just like a bright end. And for me, in a way, I think it is hard. I do use it actually because there's days. I mean, and the issue where Counselor Lehman was talking about, I've had three meetings in one day. One right in the morning, one in midday, and then one in the afternoon. And I'm like, oh my goodness, do I even, you know, when, pre-COVID, like, do I have a chance to even make it to my regular job? So that was kind of hard. And even now, it's like, I think I feel like I'm sitting at my desk right here pretty much all day. I'll take a break, we'll have lunch and run back. So I, I mean, if there's enough consensus to get rid of it, I guess I'd just find it, you know, not attend, you know, the meeting if that's what it is.
Thank you. Counselor Whiting?
Let's face it, we work during the days. We have jobs and the council pay isn't covering, you know, our bills. That's not why we do it. But the per diem does cover the cost that we do have to take away from our jobs. And I think that was the point is that some folks weren't showing up for meetings and the thought was if we're a liaison, we should be showing up. But, you know, there's a cost to that and so we should be reimbursed a little bit for that. You know, I would, and I know some of these meetings are on the same day. I would say if it's not related to the same, you know, meeting, you know, subcommittee meeting of the same meeting, I guess I think that was the intent at the time. I would open it up to multiple a day if you're actually going to different meetings a day. I think maybe, because there's a cost. I mean, we, I probably cut a few meetings as well if I didn't have a little bit of kickback on it, I guess. It's not a kickback, it's a per diem and that's what it's for. So that's my thought.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, if I'm going to spend half of my productivity on a given meeting day at two meetings and get reimbursed for one, it's just not financially viable for me to do that. So, and they are, you know, the training centers, I don't know, do you classify that as part of scale? I don't know. I mean, you log off for one meeting, you get on to the next. I suppose once we're open back up, you're going to be in the same location, but for two separate meetings with two separate time slots with two separate topics. To me, it's not whether the meetings are related, it's the time. You know, most of the meetings are an hour and a half, maybe, you know, maybe two. It's a heavy topic. But when you start talking four hours without drive time, it's not being realistic. It's just not realistic to expect somebody to take half of their workday off for one per diem. It's just not financially reasonable.
Well, Counselor Whiting?
I'm with whatever they come up with, whatever council wants to do because, you know, it's not really, it's not that big of a deal one way or the other for me, so.
Counselor Whiting?
Oh, I, I think, you know, thinking about it, I've served on a lot of these boards. The Scale Executive Committee, I think that's a separate day. That should be separate. The Scale Meeting, that should be separate. And I know that the Training Center Board Meeting is on the same day, but it's a separate, just because everybody happens to be there at the meeting. I think that should be separate too, because that can go long sometimes depending on what you're looking at too. So my proposal, and I would make that as a motion, to approve the list presented, but add the Scale Executive Committee, the Scale Regular Membership Meeting and the Joint Training Session Facility Meeting. Separate that out. And then I would also take off the $50, the minimum per day. That's my motion.
Just for clarification, the Scale Exec General Board and Joint Training Facility, the exec and the general board are on different days. The Joint Training Facility is on the same day as the General Board, just to make sure we're clear with everything.
Counselor Lehman?
I'm going to make a second of the motion with a friendly amendment if it's accepted. Instead of getting so wordy, I think we should just say maximum two per day as outlined by this discussion, you know, because you might follow into that two J with MVTA in a separate meeting or in the racial equity teams or Live, Learn, Earn Housing and Transit. So I don't think we should be targeting individual things. I think what Counselor Whiting, I agree with his motion, but I think staff needs to come up with the wording so that it's applied evenly across the board and not targeting different things.
Okay, so I have a motion and then I have a second that adds a maximum of two meetings per day. Is that, did I hear that correctly, Counselor Lehman?
Correct.
The motion maker, Counselor Whiting?
I would just want to clarify with Councilmember Contreras. She had mentioned several meetings in a day and whether or not how her meeting schedule fits. Is, are we going to cut you out of a meeting here?
No, that happened once, you know, but I've, and then I've kind of just worked it out that I either don't attend. I mean, it just, it was, it was a Thursday when we had like three, but I think it was just the way they moved one that they had to reschedule and it just happened. So I think two would be fine.
Okay, then I'm fine with the amendment.
Okay. Motion on the table and a second with a maximum of two meetings. So discussion, I want to make again very clear that mileage is not included in these or would be applicable. So you're getting paid to go to a liaison and getting a fixed amount. If you were to go to an event that's approved by the city, a class, a training, something like that, you can get your classes paid for and then you could take mileage if it was out of town. But the per diem, you can't get per diem plus mileage. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I just wanted to point out that this is only exclusive to the meetings listed on this updated sheet. So let's say, let's say I attend a meeting that I'm not the liaison to, that's not on this list, that's not eligible.
Right. Correct.
Okay.
Counselor Whiting?
I just want to check with Counselor Lehman on the 169 Corridor Coalition. I believe that travels several miles, doesn't it? That's a long haul sometimes, isn't it?
We have, yes.
I mean, there are some that do have some mileage to it and I would, I would add that one if it's, you know, over 20 miles. I think we should have an exception.
Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, if I'm traveling to Mankato for 169 Corridor Coalition, I have the option of turning in a mileage reimbursement for that meeting or the per diem, but not both. And, you know, if the mileage reimbursement is, I don't know what it is, 50 cents a mile or something like that, I can pick whichever one works best, but I can't pick both. That's how I feel about it.
That sounds reasonable.
I would concur. You know, I'm just not a big fan of per diem. It causes problems not only in our community, but in other communities. And we seem to have to revisit it. It's a simple thing. And it's just some extra reimbursement for your appointed liaison. I still, when this came up, I just, I struggled. I personally don't take it. And that's my personal choice. I know it's available. We don't do this for the money. We do it for the betterment of our community because we care. But with that being said, with some modifications and also an improvement on our list with clarification on mileage, for now I would be acceptable to this. Counselor Brennan, did you have any more further comments?
No, I have no opinion.
Motion on the table and a second. Discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. You have enough clear, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all. Let's move ahead to 8B1, a text amendment to the city zoning code. And Mr. Kurski, or Peggy Sue will present.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Tonight I have a text amendment to the city zoning code, amending sections 151, 002, 007, and 108. So from time to time, the city code must be amended to correct minor errors, to make the text clearer or to make it more understandable and readable. So tonight what we have are just some kind of minor changes. So tonight, what we have are just some kind of minor changes, um, where we either saw errors in the code, or where the code was not very clear. So the proposed changes, section by section, first are some changes to the definitions, to include some new definitions, actually not new, um, but to reiterate some definitions related to bluffs. Um, definitions related to bluffs have been buried within our shoreline overlay zone, and so what we're doing is, um, placing these in 151, 002 again, to make it clear that bluffs could exist outside shoreline overlay zones. In 151, 007, we are adding language regarding bluff regulations. Again, these regulations already exist within the city zoning code, but we would be, um, pulling them into this general regulation section to, again, um, address situations where bluffs exist, um, in places where they're not immediately adjacent to water. Again, in 151, 007, we are renumerating sections to accommodate that addition of 151, 007 dot I. And then finally, in 151, 108, construction materials, we're modifying some of the allowed materials within the I-1 and I-2 districts. So these, I won't read them all, but these are the definitions that we're adding related to bluffs. Again, these definitions already exist in the code, they exist in the shoreline overlay section, and what we're doing is, um, just repeating them in the definition section so that it's more clear that, again, bluffs can exist anywhere in the community, um, and don't need to be adjacent to shoreline. Again, in 151, 007, that's general regulation, so these are regulations that, um, relate to general development. We're pulling the rules that are just, um, only found in the shoreline overlay section, um, and adding it to that general regulation section, um, so that we can have, um, clear rules for the development of bluff areas, such as setbacks and vegetation clearing, um, but again, in instances where they may not be adjacent to shoreline. And then finally, in 151, 108, this is just a minor change, um, where we're modifying the percentage of materials that can be used in industrial zones. So non-corgated insulated metal panels, engineered wood fiber, um, fiber cement siding, which they used to be allowed as primary materials in the I-1 and I-2 district, um, and now we are only allowing them as accent materials. So developments in the industrial districts would only be allowed a, a smaller proportion of those materials, um, and that is primarily due to, um, the fact that these materials just don't hold up as well, they don't look quite as nice, um, so looking to improve what the look of our industrial areas are. And then finally, the last change in this section of construction materials is, um, the explicit requirement that louvers and vents, so those top, um, vents that might be on the top of a roof or on the side of a building, must be color integral to match the roof or the building colors in all districts. So, um, at their regularly scheduled meeting on March 4th, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve the ordinance. And then the action requested tonight would be for this body to approve ordinance oh 2021, 006, amending the city code sections, um, as listed on the slide. With that, I can take any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
Why in the world would we require somebody's vent to be the same color as the building if they wanted to use the vent to match the soffit or something? To accent the building?
Yeah, uh, that's a great question, Matt, uh, Councilmember Lehman. Um, these, uh, typically what we're talking about is the vents and louvers that are on the roofs or on the sides, so, um, the language is that they just need to be color integral, so that might be the soffits or the facets, uh, the soffits, um, it might be the, um, roof color. It's more to prevent situations where, and we've had this in the city happen before, um, where you have this beautiful looking building, and then, um, they're just like sticking the equipment on top, and it is a totally different color, a totally different look. Um, so just trying to raise the quality of what that looks like, um, and, and I think Mr. Kirsty could talk to that a little bit more, um, around the reasoning for that.
Well, I, I'm thinking if you have a, a air exchange fan on the side of an industrial building that you open up to exhaust the building, that cover has to be the same color as the siding next to it when it was probably stainless steel to begin with.
Uh, Mr. Kurski?
Mayor and council, th- this is really designed for, uh, and in industrial buildings, they have been able to match the colors. Um, if you look at the Churney Building, they did that kind of on their own. This is really aimed at, we had a couple situations, particularly in the apartment developments, where the exhaust fans for rest, uh, bathrooms and kitchen vents are a different color, or the, um, magic packs, which are the super efficient mechanical units, might have white louvers on a brown building, and all of a sudden, they become the dominant material. So we've talked to all of the developers, and most cities require it already, we're one of the few that does not require that. And so, as, uh, Ms. Amy, he mentioned, we often get apartment buildings, and they don't show those on the plans, because those come in in the mechanical plans, so all of a sudden the building has a hundred and fifty vents sticking out the front that are not the same color as the building. So this is a pretty standard, in fact, there's a new products out on the market, because this is pretty standard throughout the country now, where they're actually, they're no longer vents, they are just small holes in the building that rotate out, and they're integral color, and they're made at just about any color on earth, because they also have issues with insects and animals with the old style vents that stick out. So this is becoming, uh, pretty much a national trend, and we're one of the few cities that has not required that.
Okay, can I?
Yep.
Follow up on the bluffs? So, my walkout rambler would picture definition of a bluff on the side hills on both sides of my house, eighteen percent, fifty feet. So what restrictions do we have on the bluffs now? Used to be a hill, now it's a bluff.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question, Councilmember Lehman. Um, so the bluff ordinance that we have proposed, um, to show in 151, 007, um, is what already currently exists within the zoning code. Um, so this is not a new regulation, uh, we're not introducing any new regulations, these are existing regulations, um, for bluffs. This is, uh, where I, I believe our code is in error, um, excuse me, where bluffs were only, um, considered in the shoreline overlay zone, and not as something that could exist, um, outside shorelands, which we know that there are lots of places, especially, um, in the Windermere neighborhood, for example, um, where they, um, they exist not adjacent to a, a waterway. And so, again, these are, they're not new regulations, they're just moved to be in a place that, um, kind of duplicates these regulations.
Are we requiring the, the bluff, what's now defined as a bluff, to be cleared of vegetation?
Uh, Councilmember Lehman, uh, we don't require that they clear them of vegetation, it's actually the opposite, um, where we, we have special requirements to maintain the vegetation there.
Is my grass next to my house okay?
Uh, Councilmember Lehman, I, I don't know where you live, or if your grass is okay, but I assume it probably is.
Uh, Michael wants to weigh in here, and then I'll come back to Mr. Whiting.
Mayor and council, so one of the goals of this is, right now, we use the shoreline overlay in areas, as Ms. Amy, he mentioned, that don't have water, and so we're just trying to be clear. So in Windermere, um, D.R. Horton has honored the bluff requirements that are in the shoreline overlay, and I think as other developers come in, we're just trying to make it clear now that those rules apply wherever there is a bluff, whether it's next to the water or not. And it's really a safety issue, particularly in the Windermere area, so that we don't get homes that are basically, um, built into the bluff and causing damage to other neighbors. So this is a, excuse me, again, a standard that's used by, um, all of the watershed districts around here, and so we're trying to be transparent, so we don't have to say to somebody, well, your bluff's covered in shoreline overlay, and the first thing they say is, well, I'm not next to water, and we go, well, according to the zoning code, that's where it's applicable. So we're trying to now actually put it so that it, people don't have to look in the water code, even when they're not next to water.
All right, Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first, um, Mr. Lehman, you're not gonna be developing your property, so I don't think we have to worry about that. Um, and I think it was a little bit before my time on the council, but I know it was on your time when that bluff ordinance went in place, and it was, uh, a lot to do with some of the things that were going on at Dean's Lake, I believe. And I know at one point in time, we even had, uh, somebody come in on a weekend, uh, chainsaw crew and, uh, cleaned off one of the bluffs, and I know that was a big issue, and that was during my time. Uh, there's so many concerns with erosion, I know we have the, uh, even with not being on a shoreline, erosion is a concern, and our tree preservation is definitely a concern. Uh, those bluff requirements are, are not, uh, to be overly burdensome, but to conserve that tree line and those trees that, uh, are on those bluffs to, uh, not only erosion, but to enjoy for our community too, so, um, and I, I didn't even know that this was only part of the shoreline overlay zone, so that's good. Uh, cleaning up this zone, uh, zoning stuff is great. Um, seeing these changes, uh, it's like, wow, you guys have been digging deep, so that's great work, um, glad to see it. So, that, that's my thoughts on it.
Appreciate that. Um, I guess, uh, for the roof aspect, not really in the industrial area, but to give you some context for me, is like the top of the Lowe's building. You know, you can drive on Eagle Creek Boulevard 16 and drive by it, and you look down at it, and it's all white, obviously, they want to reflect heat, but all their mechanical things are blended in with the roof. It's just one seamless color. Um, to me, I think, uh, I think that's good, even though that's a retail and, you know, we're talking about industrial, but I roughly think that's the, the same sort of concept, so. Other questions of staff? Counselor Contreras?
No questions, just I'd like to make a motion, um, and approve ordinance zero. It's oh, 2021 dash 006, amending city code sections 151 dot 002, 151 dot 007, and 151 dot 008.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Brennan. Further discussion? Discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
I suppose.
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. The motion passes. I know these text amendments are tr- trying to get a handle on understanding, but I do appreciate staff working through that. This is not the first time we've seen something like this. Um, anything to improve, enhance our community, um, some things that were designed or built in the forties, are they applicable in 2021? Um, so value added to staff, thank you very much. All right. Eight B two, 2040 Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Amendment, and Peggy Sue will present.
Mayor? Mayor?
I'm sorry.
I would like to, I would like to make a motion to take a five-minute break.
Whiting, second.
Oh, motion for a break, five-minute break, uh, and there would be no further discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye, we'll stand a turn until 25 after, thank you. I'm trying.
I'm trying.
We'll reconvene the City of Shakopee City Council meeting for March 16th, 2021. Concluding a short break here. We're moving ahead then to 8B2, which is a 2040 Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Amendment. And Peggy Sue will present. Welcome.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Mars and members of the council. Today I have a map amendment to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. So just as a reminder, this may feel very familiar as we recently amended our comprehensive plan. This is similar, but at a much smaller scale. The 2040 Comprehensive Plan was adopted in November 2019 and cities are allowed to make changes to this plan via local resolution. And this is again another, this is a change similar to what we saw last time, but much smaller. So I just want to reiterate some of the reasons why we may make an amendment to our plan. So changes in development or small area planning, perhaps forecast changes or expansion of Musa boundaries, text changes to revise a policy or routine updates. But the biggest reason that we have our change in front of us tonight is a land use change to allow a proposed development. So we are allowed to change the plan in response to a proposed development. So the proposed changes for a parcel, if you'll go to the next slide, Michael. Oh, okay. The next, the proposed amendment is to modify the land use category for a parcel along Beurling and Lincoln. So kitty corner to turny and just behind doggy doos is kind of where this parcel is. It's not addressed as it's owned by the city, the EDA. The map amendment that we're proposing is changing the parcel to mixed residential, which is a land use category that allows for six to 30 dwelling units per acre. We are going to rezone this parcel after regiding it to R3, which would allow this to have a max of 51 units. So this could, this mixed residential category would allow for, it's a 30, 3.66 acre parcel. So theoretically it could have a little over 100 units, but because we are going to rezone it to R3, it would be capped at that 51 units. Again, this parcel is owned by the EDA and is under contract right now to be sold to a developer. So this is where that parcel is. It's again at the intersection of Beurling and Lincoln. It's that little, if you look at the big red blob right in the center of that black circle, you'll notice that the lower corner of that is changing from red to orange. That is consistent with adjacent land use patterns. The development to the south is a town home development that is also mixed residential. So you know, I think that as we've looked at this parcel, we've thought retrospectively that perhaps it would have been a better land use for this to be mixed residential in the first place. And that's something we just, you notice, notice over time rather than noticing while we're in the plan. It's such a zoomed out, big look at the plan that sometimes these small parcels need to be changed from time to time. At the regular scheduled meeting on March 4th, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve the resolution and did recommend that. So if approved by the city council, the changes will be sent to adjacent and effective communities for a review period and then set to the Metropolitan Council for adoption. With that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Peggy Sue. Questions of staff? Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. Question I had is if that second slide had us regiding it to mixed residential, which was up to 30 units. And then we're going to rezone it to up to 51 units. Why would we not reguide it to the 51 to begin with?
That's a great question, Councilmember Lehman. So each guiding, land use guiding district in the plan has a range of densities that it's allowed at per acre. And so those are set in the plan. That's not something we're allowed to change on a case by case basis. So every mixed residential parcel that's guided for mixed residential in the 2040 plan can allow a range of six units to 30 units. And so that accommodates a lot of different types of mixed residential style development. And guiding is, you know, at the highest level, what we imagine for a land parcel to develop into. Then at a more local level, we rezone the property. So mixed residential could look like R3 or it could look like R4. And so we're choosing in this instance to rezone this as R4, which is a slightly lower density, but still within that comprehensive plan range of six to 30 units per acre. So what we're doing is a calculation. When I say add a maximum, it could have 51 units. That is using the per calculation of 14 units per acre. So again, that 14 fits in the range of six to 30. And so we could again guide that for any number of districts. But in this instance, we think that something that's 14 units per acre is kind of that exactly right mixed residential that we're looking for. So denser than a single family home development, but not quite as dense as an apartment.
You just said we're going to rezone it to R4.
I think she said four. What did she meant three?
Okay. All right. What, did you mean three?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Whiting and Councilmember Lehman. I did mean R3.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor and council, it's currently, it's currently zoned R4, so we're actually going to be changing the zoning to R3.
Counselor Whiting.
To me, this, this seems natural and consistent with the zoning around it. I think at the time when we were doing the comp plan, it was a blank slate over there. And we were hoping for big, big, bigger pictures or we, you know, who knows what we were hoping for over there at the time. Not sure. We might have missed this spot, but it seems consistent and good fit. So with that, I'd make a motion to approve resolution number R2021-043, requesting an amendment to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan and authorizing submission to the Metropolitan Council.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. This vote will take a super to make an amendment to the comp plan. Further questions of staff? Further questions of staff? Or further discussion, excuse me, further discussion? By voice vote, Mr. Reynolds.
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
They got the four, so mine don't matter. I guess I'll have to say aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you, Peggy Sue, for your presentation and your, thank you very much. Let's move ahead then to 8B3, Final Platte Windermere South Fourth Edition. And Mr. Kurski will present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, this is the final plat for Windermere South Fourth Edition. This is the location. This is also the area that you vacated some easements this evening. Here is the new final plat. So it's 53 acres development to be located within the Windermere neighborhood in a PUD. It's 126 single family residential lots, including 12 from the Windermere First Edition. 51 lots that would be 65 feet wide and 75 lots that would be 55 feet wide. Additional park and open space is prominent throughout this development with land to be included in the Windermere Park. And it's an integral trail system with extensive landscaping and play features. The trail system and the greenway is representative of what was shown in the original Parks and Trails Master Plan and would serve as a connection to the Windermere Park and the Bluff Land to the north. So this, if you all remember, this was the plan that was approved as part of the PUD. And you can see there's a pretty extensive greenway system connecting to the future Windermere Park. This is the concept plan with the greenway and play features running through the center of the development that was part of your PUD approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Just one minute. All right. Questions of staff? Counselor Lehman.
Mayor, can staff point out where the easements that on the new plat for us that were vacated earlier?
Okay, he needs to put this image up.
Just one minute.
He's got it now. There we go. So council members, part of that easement was drainage utilities was up in here. And then the other easements that were vacated were down in this area and on this corner over here.
How do we get a pointer on that screen?
All right, hang on. I'm sorry, council member.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay.
So there are new easements here, up in here. If you remember when we did this, excuse me, originally council, mayor and council. This was the city park, so they adjusted the park line a little bit in here and then out. So we actually ended up getting more land in here. That's why we had to change this easement. And there's new easements here and then down in here because we're bringing in these lots that are over here. And so now all the drainage will run through the new Outlet A, which will be part of the city's property.
Does that help, Counselor Lehman?
It does. There was one little tree area on the end of the housing. Maybe that was the other plat. That might be the other plat.
Okay. Other questions of staff? Just one minute. Other questions of staff? Okay. Does a applicant want to make any comment on this? Okay. Counselors, Counselor Whiting.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R2021-029, a resolution approving the final plat of Windermere South Fourth Edition and move its adoption.
Second by Contreras.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds.
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. That motion passes. Final plat's been approved. Thank you very much. Let's move ahead then to 8B4, Interim Use Permit for a concrete crushing and storage of construction materials and equipment on Cree Tech's Industrial Park. And Mr. Kurski will present.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. This is the interim use permit over at the Cree Tech's Industrial Park. So this is the potential area that they've requested of the interim use to allow concrete crushing and storage of construction materials and equipment on this property located south of Highway 101 and west of Stagecoach Road. You'll see later tonight, there is a plat for this area, so this will make some sense. This was a long discussion at the Planning Commission meeting. So this is the actual location will be, this is showing where the new plat with the cul-de-sacs will be right off. Be the main lot coming into the property. If you remember, Cree Tech's left behind a lot of concrete products. So whatever's left on this adjacent site will be brought over here and crushed along with other material that hedges might have in the area that they need to crush. So while staff did not support the activity unless those materials were for use in the construction of this particular project, the Planning Commission proposed alternative language, which we're bringing to you tonight for approval, which is outside materials can be brought to the site for crushing and recycling until the certificate of occupancy for the Southwest Logistics Center is issued, at which time crushing activities must also cease. There was concern expressed at the Planning Commission by the members that once that new building comes into play, you're going to have a 500,000 square foot building there with 200 and some odd trucks going in and out, that the concrete crushing and recycling was probably not a good adjacent use. So staff reviewed the required criteria and found that the proposal would meet them and provided the conditions are noted in the draft resolution are met. The interim use permit would be allowed for a maximum of two years and staff would not support additional extensions. The applicants already, excuse me, the applicants already received a prior two year interim use permit for this location.
Questions of staff? So they're operating on a interim use? And that?
Mayor and council, that will be expiring, I believe, in May.
So this is an extension, but then the?
This is new mayor because it's going to a new parcel that's being created in the next plat that you'll see.
Other questions of staff? Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. For staff under, where is it? Number 10 of the resolution criteria. Number 10 hours of operation for crushing, seven to 10 weekdays, nine to nine weekends and holidays. Is that the, is that different from our current noise ordinance throughout the city? Is it different for industrial?
Mayor and council, no, that's our standard noise ordinance, which would apply here.
And I don't recall any residential anywhere near this site. Is that correct?
Mayor and council, that's correct. This is adjacent, further north is the Blue Water Wastewater Treatment Plant. This is adjacent to the railway.
Very industrial.
Yeah, right behind us is a switching station, isn't it?
Mayor and council, that's correct.
Okay, so we shouldn't be having a noise issue at all. Okay, thank you.
Other questions of staff? And I just clarification on this. They couldn't, under this proposal here, they can bring outside material in.
Mayor and council, that's correct. So they can use the existing material that's currently on site. They can bring in whatever other material they need for other projects in the area, this particular project. But the actual concrete crushing that will occur here needs to stop when WPT's real estate development gets its certificate of occupancy.
And then the timeline, you said two years. Was that and/or until the building gets a CO or?
Mayor and council, it's two years for the interim use. So the only thing we're not saying is once they reach that two years, they can't import or crush material. But they may have other equipment and such they want to store in the area. They are, you'll see in the next plat, there are other lots that are going to be developing. So they may have material that they need to use on those other lots. So that two year time period is while they develop this subdivision.
Good. Other questions of staff? Counselor Whiting.
Just want to clarify, they've had this interim permit for a while and they've been crushing some of the concrete, haven't they? That's on site?
Mayor and council, yes. So hedges, this currently is one gigantic parcel or actually two parcels. So they've been crushing a fair amount of the existing concrete pipe that was on site. But they've also been bringing in other material to get crushed that, for instance, was used at Canterbury for some of the roads and for other projects, say, over in Chanhasan. They're, they're a pretty large road building company, so they have other projects.
Well, I understand the need for the crushing of the concrete. I just thought it was going to be for the concrete that was on site and not an extended use. So I guess this surprises me a little bit. I guess it's not a bad site for it. And I know we need it in construction in the area, but I wouldn't be in any favor of expanding it past the two years at all.
And Mayor and council?
It's pretty close to our park too.
And Mayor and council, just to be super clear, so the direction from the Planning Commission, which I believe is in the resolution, is that no more crushing or importing of that concrete material once the WPT building gets its certificate of occupancy, which based on their construction timetable, which is very aggressive, will probably be less than a year from now. They'll still be able to use the site for other purposes while they're building out the park.
Outdoor storage. Stockpiling of?
Other materials.
Other material, but no crushing. Okay.
I'm fine with that, as long as there's not a loophole that can expand that without that. I'm fine with that, as long as there's not a loophole that can, can expand that without that certificate of occupancy is, is, is all I'm concerned with.
Thank you, Councilman Lehman?
Mayor, maybe I can clarify Council Whiting's concern, it says two years and the only loophole would be if the building doesn't get built. The two years is still going to come to an end, even if that doesn't happen, they would have to come back at that time. That's my reading.
Mayor and Council, that's correct.
Again, I don't know if our community or city has been involved in a lot of interim uses, permits like this. I think there's been very few and what, you know, you really don't want them to become permanent or continue from that aspect, but I think our city attorney wants to weigh in.
Yes, if I could, Mr. Mayor, Michael, I just wanted, I just need clarification, so after the certificate of occupancy for Southwest Logistics is issued, both the crushing activities must cease and they also cannot bring any outside materials onto the site, correct?
Mayor and Council, City Attorney, that's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the, but just, but this interim use permit allows concrete crushing and storage, so if we assume that certificate of occupancy is issued, let's say after the, a year, the second year, they would only be allowed to store construction materials, is that correct?
Mayor and Council, City Attorney, that's correct, they could have construction materials that they crushed during this period stored on the site, or other materials they could bring in that can be stored on the site, and equipment that could be stored on the site. But they could not be importing additional material or doing any more crushing.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, that's what the resolution reflects as I read it, so I, I think we're fine, I just wanted that clarification.
Thank you. Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? All right, would the applicant like to make any comment in regard to this? Okay. I think we, you know, this is, this has got a stopgap on the crushing aspect of it with the allowance for storage for this interim permit, so this is a pretty industrial area in Hall, there's, I don't, no homes around it, yes, there's a city park, but this has been an industrial area in our community for, forever. So, and it's great to see this property that we'll see finally get further developed, actually, or even redeveloped, so I think for this short little window, this should be fine, and it's not a very visible site as well. Council Contreras?
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number R 2021-040, a resolution approving the interim use permit request to allow concrete crushing and storage of construction materials and equipment.
Councilman Lehman?
Aye.
I have a motion as second for this, further discussion? 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 By voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. That motion passes, thank you very much. Let's move ahead then to 8B5 preliminary and final plat of the Hedges Industrial Park. Michael, welcome back.
So Mayor and Council, as said, this is the preliminary and final plat of the Hedges Industrial Park. Excited to see this before you tonight, this has been a long time in the works. This is the site we talked about earlier, so here's where all of the concrete currently is sitting, you can see many rows of it. And there's some additional things, this is the Gavilon Microsource plant over here. So the site consists of approximately 80 acres, once planted, the site will now include five lots for development, a new Hedges public right-of-way, and a reconstructed Stagecoach Road, including a brand-new roundabout, Lot 2 would be a 39-acre site for a 500,000-plus square foot industrial building, which will be called the Southwest Logistics Center to be developed by WPT REIT. WPT owns 108 properties in this country. They consist of 35.6 million square feet, they're in 28 states, and right now they're running 98.3% occupancy. So they are based out of Canada, they're one of the largest industrial REITs in the country, so we're happy to see them here. Lot 5, which is the current Gavilon Fertilizer LLC property, is going to be reconfigured, which you'll see in a minute. And then the remaining lots will be available for further industrial development. So this will be the new roundabout with a new Stagecoach Road, you can see underlying here, currently has this kind of sweeping curve. It'll now come in here, go through the roundabout, and then come back out onto the highway at the signal. This was really a critical piece, engineering's done a lot of work on this to make sure this particular site works so that our morning rush hour traffic can get through here, but also all of the trucks from the new industrial center and further sites developed here will have good access to a signal on the highway. This is the plat, you can see the five lots, here's the big change, so this is Lot 5, Gavilon Microsource is picking up this parcel over here. This is actually where the crushing will occur, there will be another lot up in this corner. And then Lot 1 will be the site for WPT. They will be accessing out of this cul-de-sac. And then 70th Street access will be for emergency vehicles, so they do have two ways into this property. So again, this is the Southwest Logistics, Logistics Center, and then this will be the piece added on to Gavilon Microsource, they've been great to work with because they had to give up a portion of the front of their property, right now they're pretty well hidden. Right now, as you go by, this is all a treat area, most people don't even know they're behind there. They've done a great job of working with Hedges to build a new parking area here, so we can make sure the trucks are not in this roundabout. They are a pretty large micro fertilizing, particularly for this area for seed product. So this is really important for them to have great access. And then they've been looking, they were going to expand up in this area, now they get a little over two acres down here where they can build a future warehouse building. So this is the WPT Logistics Center. Dock doors on both sides, some pretty large parking fields, again, this is their emergency access, but into this roundabout will be the primary access for both vehicles and trucks. They've worked really closely with engineering to get kind of the vehicle separation here, so we don't have trucks necessarily mixing with driving through where the workers will be parking. Again, this is all heavy truck docks, this is all concrete down in this area. They've also worked with the engineering department and with Hedges, there's a sewer line up here, which they'll be connecting and improving. So an environmental assessment worksheet was approved by this council in February of 2021. The site has been created that meets the need for the Southwest Logistics Center, Gavilon is getting additional land to allow for that roundabout. And they now have additional land to be utilized for future expansion, there's a new public road, outlots that comply with the city design standards. And the draft resolution includes conditions to ensure compliance with the city and shock of the public utility requirements.
All right, questions of staff? Councilman Lehman?
Mayor, can we get that roundabout put up on the screen? I'm, I'm coming out of this site and I want to make a, a left-hand turn and go back to the stoplight on 101. How does that happen?
I will leave that expertise to Mr. Lilahog, who's online here.
Good evening, council members and mayor, if you're leaving the WPT site, I can't control the cursor, but you would enter the cul-de-sac, and then you'd travel eastbound, and then you would go around the roundabout and go north, it'd be pretty free-flowing at that point. Unless you got a AM peak conflicts coming down Stagecoach Road, but then you would approach north and go up to the traffic signal on County Road 101. So that would be the route.
Mayor, I'm looking at that and I'm looking, if you come in off of 101, and I don't know if my cursor can do this, I doubt it.
I've got it.
Okay, if you come down 101 and you, you follow it, don't take the roundabout, just go to your left. It looks like it's divided, nope, go, take a left, right? Right in there, that road seems like it's divided.
Can't take a left there.
There, Mayor and Council members, there's, there's going to be raised medians, it's going to, it, it will be channelized, pretty much like a typical roundabout, similar to the ones in Verling, Shenandoah that we built recently, so there, there won't be too much confusion on, on which way you can and can't go, and the signage will be out there to guide you to stay on Stagecoach or New Hedges Way. Maybe I'm missing something, though.
Yeah, can you put your cursor at the bottom of that roundabout?
Here?
Yeah, bottom, okay, now, now, show me how you get to 101.
Go up through here and then go out up here.
Okay, so that, where the, where the road is split, just to the northeast of the top of the roundabout. You're going to be able to get through there? Right there?
Yep, yep, you'll be, you could, you could drive around that roundabout continuously for hours upon hours if you wanted to.
All right, I was just looking, I was just looking at that.
Yep.
Northeast, look, it looked like there was a split in the two lanes, and there was like a concrete barrier between the two or something.
Yeah, and we, we have a better colored exhibit, we, you know, we have a lot better exhibit than this, we could, we can forward to you on the side to reassure and, and show you what we have there. And I, and we can do that.
All right, because if you can't get back to 101, then how does the trucks get to 101 if they can't do that movement? But you're assuring me they can do that movement, so I'm good.
Yep, full access, 100%, yep.
Thank you.
You know, there, there is a good movie called Once Around with Richard Dreyfuss in it, and a great little humorous movie, and at the end he goes around and around and around, so. But the, the question about that, so if I'm going east on 101 and get on Stagecoach, I actually have to come in and go around the roundabout to continue down to Ziegler and, and et cetera, to go, continue to go east on Stagecoach, is that correct?
Mayor, that, that is correct, you know, we, we struggled with this area for good access and to provide safe access to this entire parcel. We, we started out by trying to provide access over on the other side, the west side on 70th. And with that frontage road, it was, it just, we couldn't come up with a feasible solution there that was cost-effective. Working with the county and with their engineer. And it is a little circuitous, the, the, the pattern that you just mentioned, but it's, you know, minimal seconds at most. And I think once people start using it, it will be, you know, yes, it seems a little, little out of the beaten path or circuitous, redundant there, but it, it shouldn't be a major inconvenience for anybody.
And then if I'm going west on, on Stagecoach and trying to get it to 101, I get a free right pass along the, the outer edge of the, of the roundabout, correct?
Yes, Mayor, and we actually have a, a free right lane, a kind of an add-on second, second lane, so it, 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 it does have that free flow movement. Because that is a heavier AM, AM movement with that peak traffic trying to circumvent some of the backups on County Road 21 and the interchange area there.
Yep. That's why I asked the question, so thank you, other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? This is from my perspective, I know the roundabout and that, but the development of these lots to see further development or redevelopment, depending on how you want to look at it. I think bodes well for our community, it allows the current company to expand when necessary, we're getting a a new building with a new tenant down the line. And then some outlots that can even further more growth, so especially in a heavy industrial area that not a lot of people pay attention to in this area. Council Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it sounds like staff, planning staff and engineering has put a lot of time into this and to answer, look at Mr. Lehman's question, it does look to me on that, on the black and white here, that it, it did have berms or something, that it would have been would have been tricky, but roundabout as a roundabout, I hope it goes around, so I hope we can get out of there, but no, it sounds like we did a lot of work on that, so with that, I'm glad to see this project create five new spaces for, for, you know, development, so I'd make a motion to approve resolution R 2021-041, a resolution approving the preliminary and final plat of Hedges Industrial Park and move its adoption.
A second.
Counsel Brennan, seconds. Further discussion?
I, Mayor, I just want to thank, I just want to thank Gavilon for the, for the negotiation that they did for their property, and also thank the staff for the work that they did to actually come, to get this come together. Because I know it was a while.
A lot of collaboration and partners working together and for common goals for the long term, I think that's great. Motion on the table in a second, further discussion? Discussion, discussion, by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye, aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. That motion passes. Congratulations, thank you very much. All right, we can move forward here to 8C1, the West End Lift Station Sewer Project and Mr. Lilahog, I know we just have about 10 minutes left of our meeting here, so proceed.
Mayor and council members, we're going to have Darren Manning tune in and he's going to give this presentation, so I'll just pass it right over to him, he can tune in via Zoom.
Thank you. Darren, thank you and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight I'm here to present to you the feasibility report for the West End Lower Bluff Lift Station and Sanitary Sewer Force Main Project. Next slide. The study area for the feasibility report is located along the Highway 169 corridor on the west end of the community and lies largely within Jackson Township with a small portion lying within Louisville Township. Next slide. On January 21st, 2020, the city entered into a professional services agreement with AE2S to perform a feasibility study. The purpose of the study was to evaluate the feasibility of extending trunk sanitary sewer improvements into and through the study area. Tonight I will discuss two alternatives for the lift station site location and associated force main alignment. I will also be asking for the mayor and council members to accept the feasibility report and provide guidance on the alternates for necessary proposed improvements. Next slide, so the study area is approximately 2,700 acres in size and consists of a mix between rural residential, commercial, industrial, and mobile home communities. There is also quite a bit of open space and land being used for agricultural purposes. Along the eastern boundary line of the study area lies a bluff. This bluff was identified in the envisioned shock the document as being a preservation area. Now, the sanitary sewer service for occupied properties in the study area come from either individual sewage treatment systems or community sewage treatment systems. At the top of the bluff and adjacent to Highway 169, there's a trunk sewer that extends from the northwesternly corner of the Windermere Development. This pipe is sized to accommodate future flows from the lower bluff area and will serve as a connection point for the proposed force main. Next slide. Okay, the 2040 Comprehensive Plan in Vision Shock Bay and the Jackson Township Development Area A U R, A U A R were used to identify planned land uses, developable acreage, and give an estimate of timing of development within the study area. These estimates were used to guide the calculations of anticipated sewer flows generated for the area. This map shows a potential phasing plan. Uh, the area encompassed in red shows a 10-year development scenario. The black shows a 20-year development scenario and the blue shows a 20-year development scenario, a 20-year, a post 20-year uh, development scenario. Next slide. Okay, so two alternative locations for the lift station site and corresponding force main alignments were identified in the report. Alternative one puts the lift station on the south side of Highway 169 and in the vicinity of the boundary between the Norcore and Brigham and Properties. The force main would be approximately 1,700 feet and would be placed in the Highway 169 right away until it meets the Winderman Development. Alternative two puts the lift station on the west side of the Brigham and Property near the intersection of Old Brickyard Road and Coburn Drive. The force main would be approximately 5,000 feet and would be placed along the easterly right-of-way line of Old Brickyard Road and would run northerly to the boundary between Highway 169 and the Brigham and Property. And then run easterly to the connection point at Windermere. Now, both these alternatives are feasible. However, alternative one would be dependent on the timing of the development of the Brigham and Property. Next slide. Okay, here's a map showing the 2020 and 2021 annexation. Now, these two areas account for the majority of the 10-year development scenario shown on the previous slide. As you can see, going with alternative one would require orderly development on the west end, meaning that the Brigham and Property would need to be the first site to develop. This would allow for a connection point at the westerly edge of the property for future developments to connect. This alternative would not be ideal if this, in the scenario, the west side of Old Brickyard Road develops before the Brigham and Property. The advantage of this alternative is it maximizes the area served by gravity, reducing the length of force main and subsequently reduces the cost. Alternative two would allow for development to occur on either side of Old Brickyard Road without waiting for an orderly development, meaning the Brigham and Property can be skipped if there is interest in another property. With this alternative, when the Brigham and Property develops, sanitary sewer would gravity to the lift station. This alternative provides the most flexibility in responding to different development scenarios. Next slide. Okay, now let's look at the cost associated with each alternative and how they compare to the capital improvement budget. Alternative one and two both come in under budget with alternative one having the lowest cost. After removing non-developable acreage like natural waterways, right-of-way swamps, lakes, or DNR designated wetlands, we end up with approximately 1,154 acres of developable land. When we compare the cost of each alternative for develop acre, it's approximately $300 more per acre for alternative two. Uh, for each alternative, the lift station force main oversizing cost would be fully recovered with the trunk sanitary sewer charges collected at the time subdivision plots are recorded. The base cost of the force main would be paid through a lateral sanitary sewer connection charge, which would be established using actual construction cost. This fee would be paid by properties that benefit from the lift station force main. Next slide. Okay, now for the preliminary schedule, uh, largely depends on which alternative is chosen. If alternative one is the chosen, alternative design and construction would begin as soon as development is certain for the Brigham and Property. If alternative two is chosen, land acquisition and design would begin this year with construction likely starting fall of 2022, 2023. Uh, and with that, that is my presentation and I stand for any questions.
Darren, thank you very much for your presentation. Questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, my question for the consultant is the space between alternative one location and alternative two location. Will sewer not gravity feed from location two to location one?
Mayor and council members, if I could interject first, um, my responsibility to better introduce our own internal staff. Uh, Darren works directly for the city here, so he's not a consultant. Uh, just wanted to clarify that. So Darren, have at that question.
I was reading the A2A, whatever their name is, their report and that was a consultant.
Correct, yep.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mayor and Councilmember. The area from alternative, uh, the alternative one location would not gravity, well, it would gravity probably to the alternative two location. However, it won't get over the bluff. So the bluff between alternative two and the top of the bluff is about 50 to 60 feet in elevation change.
I don't think it has a problem coming down the bluff.
No, it'd be, it would have to go up the bluff. So, oh, was a question from alternative one to alternative two?
Well, if we put it in, oh, in location two, uh, the other side can of, of, uh, 69 can, can develop. If you put it on location one, I'm under the assumption that the sewer won't flow gravity-wise from location two to location one. Because if it did, you could have location one serve the other side of 69.
Sure, that's correct. Yeah, thanks, uh, Mayor and Councilmember, that's correct. So the low, the low line kind of, if you drew a line diagonal from alternative two to alternative one, you connected the dots. Um, that would be the low line, um, where the gravity would flow. Uh, so if you go north up to south of 169 and then travel east to, uh, where alternative one is, that would not be an ideal location to gravity feed.
And, and if I could add just big picture, um, either option, uh, it will serve the entire, the, the same entire area, the rest of the area will be by gravity only. On the, on the lower bluff end of it. So e- either of those options will be able to service the entire 20-year service ultimate area equally the same.
Okay, and then one more follow-up, Mayor?
Yes.
Somewhere in this drawing is the Shakopee Chaska Interceptor. The actual interceptor line, Met Council Shakopee Chaska Interceptor line runs underneath them power lines in this area.
Runs parallel.
Yeah, do we have no access to that?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Councilmember. Do we have access to the, to the site or, or access where?
To the Shakopee Chaska Interceptor that runs through this, this property. Sewer interceptor that runs right, it runs east-west right through the property here underneath the power lines.
Sure, I, I believe there's an access road that travels alongside that, um, that, that interceptor.
We can't tap into that interceptor?
Oh, at that location? I don't believe so. Uh, it's already, so we have a connection point at the Windermere Development that size for these flows that connect to the interceptor, um, on the west side of the, uh, Windermere Development. So there's already a connection point in, in place for that.
Okay, that's on the east of this drawing? It's at the east location?
It's, it would be right on the, um, yeah, on the right side of the, of the, uh, drawing where the red line connects to the green line.
Yeah.
That green, that green line would be the Windermere, um, connection point.
Okay.
And Mayor and council members, we, we cannot connect into that interceptor. It's actually a force main. So it's, it's pumping under pressure and we, you know, it's just, we wouldn't be allowed to, to tap into that. And then just another note, um, on, on both options. Uh, we are looking at using both, uh, we're hoping to partner with both the county for their right-of-way use and MinDOT for their right-of-way use to minimize any property acquisition. Um, so we, we are, you know, hoping that we can get our, uh, the force main in MinDOT right-of-way, which is, that's where the interceptor falls, where it parallels the red line. The inter, the interceptor is that other dotted line that is almost coincident for a portion there. Um, so, you know, in that, in that portion, it falls in MinDOT right-of-way. And they have a, they have a crude path in there to ma- to maintain and add it, uh, it, to maintain their interceptor line. Um, it's not ideal access for our lift station, so, um, you know, lift stations, we got to get down there daily in some cases, so we, we'll need a lot more access to our lift station, um, than Met. Council does to their, their intercept. So, you know, we, we generally favor option.
Can I ask a question in this map right here? So for the area in the blue and the pink, I'm looking at the upper northern west corner on the bend of 169. That area more to the west outside of the blue line on the other side of, right, that whole area that's green there, that, that wasn't calculated into the study with, you said earlier that that later would be, uh, gravity fed?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and, and, uh, that area would be, so that area was taken into account for flows. Um, I believe it was just under the, the 20-year scenario. Or maybe it was a 10-year, I have to look at the map to make sure I'm talking, are you talking about the, yeah. So that's accounted for in the 10-year scenario and those flows were accounted for in the design of the lift station.
So Mayor, that, that previous map, that was just the annexation area that you were looking at. So that, that is, that was not shown in either of those areas because it wasn't part of the annexation area. But this lighter yellowish color, it's a, it goes all the way up to the river across 169, basically the entirety of that lower bluff service area that would be included to be serviced by these, either one of these lift station locations.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Um, I can't see the other council members right now. Do we have a map up? Uh, Counselor Whiting?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question about, and do we have any idea, uh, on the Brigham and Property if there's any interest in developing that?
Mr. Kurski?
Mayor and council, um, they've had a lot of activity. Um, it's been represented by a realtor. It's going to be really up to that family. Well, Mr. Sewell was just here and has been talking with them about future development as have a couple other developers. It's a question of getting the family all on the same page. There is a lot of interest on the other side. Um, there's two pretty large parcels there owned by two people. Um, and then there's a third, we actually have already gotten a proposal for the third parcel down there. Contingent on this sewer getting built, a local Shakopee company that would move their headquarters there and build about 100,000 square foot building and then another local company that would build about a 75,000 square foot building. So there is, as, as you heard tonight, the Henches site's kind of the last large, um, inde- heavy industrial site left in the city. So we're still looking for kind of enclosed business park users. Um, there's only one major site left, that's the old TriStar site that's in, not developed right now. And so if you're looking to do anything else, there's nowhere to go. So I think the brokerage community and development community have been waiting to, to hear your input on this sewer before they go out and start acquiring property.
Value on alternative two. All right, good to know. Thank you.
I think, uh, when I'm looking at this for our future growth and the low area, the coming down off that ridge, um, and having, uh, you know, a, um, opportunity to have a business park, um, is vital for our community. You know, Valley Green is built out. Yes, do we have, uh, vacant buildings? But with this, uh, we just don't have any more true vacant land available for, um, for business park. I have another question about, on that map that has the blue and pink on it. In, not that one, the other one. This one, that, that, one more. There, other one. Go back one. No, there was one in between. That one. Thank you. So I like the concept of alternative two because it allows us more flexibility. And it, there's some partnership availability with the county and the right-of-way. But I want to make sure that if we do something like this, that this will all be eventually paid for by connects, right? And we would want that development to occur. And I'm looking in the blue mainly on the west side. If we really think that if we did alternative two, or excuse me, on the east side, that if we would see development, we talked about the Brigham and Property on the west, but, um, to me, this right below alternative two sticker there in white would be, would be prime, uh, areas to go sooner than later for connects. Would that be a fair view of this?
Uh, Mayor and councils, maybe I can give that one a jab. Um, it, it's really all, all developer-driven and, um, certainly by having option two, it provides more flexibility in the timing and serviceability to, to other parcels of land. Um, but if, if you went with option one, the, the remainder of the entire service area basically would hinge on the timing and extension of the gravity, um, through the Bruggeman Property. So they could sit there for 15 years and that entire other area just wouldn't be, be, would not be able to be developed until sanitary sewer would be extended to them. Um, so it would really hinge on that property owner and the development of their property. Um, so that, that is a, you know, a notable factor with option two.
Right. No, and as I read the memo in the packet, um, I don't want to do something where I'm limited to more development on based off of one big parcel. I, I want, I want more flexibility for as much development as possible to occur in a natural, in a natural way. Uh, Counselor Lehman?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, question, when I look at the price of the force main, 1.4, one and a half million dollars. And I think about lift station 16. That's what I see in my mind. And can you compare what we're talking about here compared to what is downtown at L16? Because the cost of L16 is much higher than 1.6, 1.5.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, uh, Mayor and Councilmembers. Um, L, this, this lift station would be quite a bit smaller than the L16 pump station. Uh, I don't think we anticipate there being any kind of huge building or anything on site. Um, it would be a wet well with, you know, two pumps would be required at the, um, intermediate build-out. The ultimate build-out would require three pumps, 25 horsepower pumps. These are quite a bit smaller than the 120 horsepower pumps at L16. So it would be, it would be quite a bit smaller than in size than L16.
Okay, and then we have the long-term maintenance and cost of replacing these pumps and stuff. Is that factored into the service over the years?
Right now, the, the only cost we have, I guess, would be the construction cost, the initial construction cost.
Okay, and then the service cost of using that service over the course of 20 or 30 years before they need replacing is what actually would fund part, part of that. Uh, I had another question. I forgot what it was. I'll come back to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Whiting?
I, I remembered. I'm sorry.
Okay, follow-up?
Where is the utility site compared to, uh, alternative two for electricity?
Right across the street?
Be just north, northwest of the, uh, alternative two?
Higher than that. It's that little triangle piece, right?
Hmm, that's correct, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, ult- ultimately, Mayor and council members, um, e- either way, we would have, uh, you know, either overhead or underground line and source of power, um, drawn off of, uh, Shakopee Public Utilities. So we'd have our own transformer typically for this type of lift station and we'd work with, uh, public utilities to, uh, create that source of power for us, for, for our facility. And, and then also one more comment on, uh, the long-term maintenance. Um, when these properties pay their connection fee, they also start paying their, uh, quarterly sanitary sewer fee. So that's, that's where this money comes for that long-term maintenance is when they connect and start paying their, their quarterly fees. You know, then, then, then that will be, you know, the money to maintain those lift stations that's stuffed into the overall sanitary fund.
Thank you.
Moving on, uh, Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is either for Darren or, or Steve. Are these, uh, lift stations scalable? So let's say we do get the big corporate headquarters that wants to build up there on the hill and flush their toilet several times a day or have a lot of water usage. Uh, could this, uh, lift station? Could this lift station be maxed out? Or would it take a major investment to add more to it?
Thank you, Mayor and council member, this, this project would be, it would be sized to, to handle the ultimate flows that was, you know, per the planned usage. So ideally, like for the Forest Main, for example, we would size the Forest Main to handle the ultimate future flows because it's not cost effective to go in and install another Forest Main or upsize it. So, you know, that would be installed to handle the ultimate design flows in the, the whole study area. The pumps would be designed to handle the, the whole study area. We can easily design the wet well to accommodate an extra pump in the future. So if the flows get higher, the wet well size to accommodate an additional pump to be installed. So there's, there's things we can do like that now initially to, to prepare ourselves for any kind of ultimate build out scenario.
Thank you.
I want to ask a follow up, or Council Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor, no, I just wanted to give my, like, my opinion on, on, on what I thought. I feel that concept two or alternative two is actually, it is in a way more favorable just because, like you had mentioned, the flexibility of being able to, you know, develop sooner, not knowing exactly when the Brighamin property would even start their development. So it just, just, just so you had my, my opinion of what I was thinking.
Thank you, council member.
Okay, just to go back and touch a little bit on Council Lehman's question about L sixteen and comparing. Is it fair analysis that L sixteen is bigger and because it covers more area and more, more stuff coming at it and the requirement that we need to get it up and going over to the, to the east?
Thank you, Mayor. The, the L sixteen site. Yeah, I'm not, Steve, can you?
Yes, certainly, Mayor and council members, the, the L sixteen service area is larger. And it's, it's definitely fully developed. But, but as we discussed, you know, when, when the, the newer area for West Lift Station is fully developed, it still won't be, you know, the capacity or the size that L sixteen is.
Okay, I got that, I just want to make sure. So then another comment or question I have, in reading through the memo and all the documentation, I have, I'm been thinking about option two because of the flexibility. But actually, on the page twenty of the report, it talks about two A and two B. And, and just, and most of the stuff is the same. One again takes more property on the, on a, on a, the adjacent landowner site versus two B?
Absolutely, Mayor, that, the both alternatives were, are feasible. For the sake of this presentation, to simplify, the cost difference of alternative two A and two B are comparable. So there's not much of a cost difference. It's more of a trying to determine on what side of the Brighamin property we would want to go with. You know, we can go with two B would be the little triangle parcel where the, just in between Coburn Drive and Old Brickyard Road would be the others, would be alternative two B, and then alternative two B, two A would be just on the west end of the Brighamin property. Both, both sites work, both sites are comparable in cost. It's just more of a, you know, what site works better when we go to, to design.
And also, Mayor and council members, for two A versus two B, it's just one side of the road or the other for the most part. That will, you know, if we go with option two, which is either one of those for the, for the general purpose. Now it's, now we got to get down to the details of working with the county and adjacent landowners to, to, to see exactly where we can place it and if we need easements. So we have a lot of flexibility in that two A, two B area to make either one of those options work. And it's more about working with the county and the, the adjacent landowners to get the right, right area and easement to do that if needed.
And more on some of the timing, this would be kind of more acquisition concept in twenty one, twenty two with build out in twenty three?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, Council Lehman?
Here, I want to try to hit this from both sides. What, you want annexation and development to be orderly, like dominoes falling? In the, that's the ideal world. So the question now is, okay, so if we go with option two, we can provide service, sewer service to the west side of Old Brickyard Road. But will they have water service and electricity, or will that have to run all the way across unused property and who's going to pay for all of this extra stuff that's not being utilized? So, so now we've got the leapfrog thing happening with not just sewer, but water and electricity. But then on the other side of the coin, you, you've got a property that wants to develop and they're held hostage by another property. So I see both sides. I just think we need to know what the total impact is. I'd certainly like to hear from the utilities on this. As far as water and electricity is concerned. I know they had a substation, so the electricity is probably not too difficult going west, but how about water?
Yeah, that's, that's a good comment, Councilmember Lehman. The water, for this sake of this feasibility study, I don't have a lot of information on the water side of it. But I can, you know, moving forward, we would have to definitely look into that.
Can I, can, can I make a motion to table this to the next meeting and, and get the utilities involved as far as electricity and water to go to the west side of Old Brickyard bypassing the other properties?
We could, my quick comments on-
It's only, it's only fair that we ask and inquire.
We could, I, my, my quick comments are that the utility just cited a substation across the street. And also, they're in the midst of building a tank on top of the hill that I'm sure encompasses the whole, whole area. That was in their long term plan, that's my recollection. Council Brennan?
Yep, that is correct. That tank is, is for servicing that area.
So can we have the utility operators weigh in on water and what their plan is to leapfrog if that happens? And let us know and bring it back to the next meeting?
Council Whiting?
Mr. Chair, I am not in favor of tabling this, I don't think it's necessary. This is a, a plan for in the future. We don't want to roadblock any potential development. And if we put in sewer, it's several years down the way. We know the water is on top of the hill. And if there's a water user, they're going to pay for development to get the water to them. And it's going to have to wait for that water tank. So I think this is, you know, it's not immediate need for this. It's going to be, it's going to take a while to develop this plan. I think we need to get started at it, we know this area is going to develop. I don't, and I know the water's on top of the hill, so it should have pretty good pressure for them showers if you put one in. So I'm not in favor of tabling this. I am in favor of alternative two, though, for moving this forward.
Are you trying to make a motion, Counselor?
Do we want a motion for this? Or is this, I would make a motion to accept the feasibility report for the West End Low Bluff Lift Station in Forest Main Project Sewer number twenty four dash zero zero, zero one, with a reference to alternative two.
A second.
Okay, Steve?
And I would offer that Shakopee Public Utilities Commission does have a water stub to the same place that we would connect with our Forest Main. And they've also indicated that there would, that they're, based on their grid system, there would be another. They are wanting to cross one sixty nine with another water from the north to the south. So there is work to definitely do on the water side of this as well. But, you know, they are, I, I know speaking with them preliminarily that they are provide, prepared to provide service and start the planning on that, should we go this direction as well. But we will certainly, you know, step up the coordination with them to make sure we have a total package of services as we go forward, including our own stormwater system.
All right, motion on the table in a second, Council Lehman?
Can, can staff get us an update on the utilities' water along with this project? Or should I just go and ask the utilities directly? What's the preference?
Thank you, Counselor, I can, I can work with the, I can touch base with the utilities and get back to you.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
A little update memo or something, something simple, I think. Okay, so, motion on the table in a second. This is only to accept the feasible, feasibility study, and we're clearing out for option two. Council Lehman?
My understanding was if we accept the feasibility and option two, that they're going to start building it. That's what, that's my understanding. So we are actually approving building this.
Wouldn't we have to go out for bids and things like that?
Mayor, what, what we were asking you to do is give us guidance on the next steps. You know, we want to solidify the programming of it in our capital improvement plan. We would hire and hire, get a professional services agreement with an engineer before we go the next step. The, the mentioned coordination with all the rest of utilities will, will bring a better package to you to make sure that, you know, we have a full city services going out to this area. So before we start developing plans or start building something, it will be back in your table to give updates and, you know, for further approvals.
Further approval, many, many steps.
But this, this generally gives us an idea that, okay, let's not wait on the Brighamin parcel. Let's proceed with option two, and we'll get things in order to proceed with that.
All right, great, thank you for the clarification. I do have a motion in a second on the table, further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote. Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye, that motion passes. Thank you very much for the detailed report, the staff work and the analysis. All right, moving ahead then, nine A is our city bill list for our review. Any comments, questions on the bill list? Seeing none, then, we would move ahead to a nine B liaison administration report. Council Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to report. I do have the Downtown Steering Committee meeting tomorrow in the morning at Bill's Custom Shop.
Thank you. Council Brennan?
Thank you, Spuck met yesterday. And interim general manager reported that he's been meeting with Minnesota Valley Electric Co-op to discuss the service territory. And he should have something in place by the end of this year. And they're also coming up with a mutual aid partnership and discussing that. Let's see, the commission approved a plan to move from a COVID protocol to a standard process of resolving delinquencies. This will be done through notification of delinquencies and possible interruption of services. Delinquencies can be resolved by being approved for the S U, S P U support, which is the grant program. If it's COVID related, delinquencies are establishing a repayment plan. Penalties will be reestablished beginning the third quarter. So that's coming up, and more information will be coming on that. And the first letter regarding that will be included in the March billing statements. The commission approved a staff plan to move from, I already read that. Penalties will be, the commission has interviewed an investment management firm and will be contracting with PFM Asset Management. That's all I've got.
Thank you very much, Council Lehman?
The one sixty nine quarter coalition meeting was moved to April, so didn't have that one. And then the regional training facility was also moved. The Scale Exec meeting, they were looking for topics for future discussion items, and I offered one. I'd like to see a discussion through scale on what cities and county all their membership can do to return back to the core mission statement of trying to look for these efficiencies by working together on things. So if, I, I did talk with Mr. Reynolds on this for, at length, and staff will be looking for efficiency ideas. And certainly welcome council also. So they're going to be doing a presentation of what efficiencies over the years they have achieved. But I'm looking more toward the last twelve months and what we can do moving into the future. Because I, I really believe that it's, it's everybody's goal to be efficient, to do things effective, efficient, and financially responsible for the people that we serve. And that's not just Shakopee, but all the member cities of Scale and Scott County. So if you have any ideas, please forward them to Mr. Reynolds for me. And he can just, Mr. Reynolds, you can just fire them over with the staff stuff, too, that would be appreciated. So that's what we're, what I'm working on, efficiencies.
I appreciate that. You bet sometimes Scale gets, gets straight off their core mission, I might agree with that. Council Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor, just a quick update, not an update, just, just to save a date, actually. Thursday, March eighteen, twenty twenty one, from seven AM to eight thirty AM. You can go have coffee with the superintendent if you have something to talk about. And that would be, that'll be held at the district office, the Welcome Center. Don't forget to bring your mask and your coffee, that's it.
Thank you. I have a couple items, met with our, by, by, or twice a year meeting with the township last night. We gave them a complete update on, on what's happening and where they're going. They have their concerns with their agreement. They would like to take back some more control and I think personally limit landowner rights. So we're going to, I think, eventually get an opinion from our attorney. Annexation is a given right of a landowner under state law. And yes, we have an agreement, but I think a landowner could fall back on a state law and say, this is a right, if I meet the criteria, I can apply for annexation. What I got out of it is the county, the township would like to be able to be, to stand in, in a yes or no situation whether a landowner could apply. They'd like to be before the application to the city. They would like to have and be able to vote on that. Last week, met with staff and Representative Mortensen about getting him on, on board of our riverbank stabilization. We shared the Senate bill that Senator Pratt is moving on. From what I got out of the meeting was, it sounded like he was very supportive of our riverbank stabilization effort, so that was good news. of, uh, our riverbank stabilization effort. Um, so that was good news. Also, I think, uh, you know, in our job, we, we take a lot of phone calls, we take emails. Um, some of it is, is good, some of it's a issue that we need to work out. But I did receive a, a letter. It must be from a, a student at one of our schools, and it was, it was to the mayor. But I, I found this on a handwritten note. Um, Mayor Mars, I like my town because everybody is really nice. And the community is very clean. And thank you for your, for your working so hard. And I actually extend this to the council and our city staff. Uh, kind of fun to get a little letter like that. Also, I think, uh, there are some bills going through the legislature or, uh, in St. Paul that are quite alarming. Um, that's something to worry about. Um, talking about local control, seating control on zoning. Um, their Senate file, uh, nine fourteen, nine fifteen, eight oh one, and a House file, uh, one zero eight five. Today, as a group of mayors of our communities in Scott County, uh, we put out a, there was a letter, a joint letter put out. Um, that Mayor Briggs from Prior Lake was spearheading, um, talking about these things of local control, taking away local control, um, and impacting our community. So really important, um, that we push back, um, on those. Um, and then just mentioning that coming up, our Easter egg hunt, Saturday, March twenty-seventh, a great event with, you know, it's gonna be an outside event. You do need to register. I know the, I don't think we had it last year because of COVID, but, um, it was one of our most popular events in years past. And then, uh, also bring up a heads up that our cleanup day, April twenty-fourth. More details will come out, but I know that's always a, a major event. Um, and that is my mayor's report. Mr. Reynolds, administration?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just a couple, a few things. Uh, first of all, I believe that we have resolved the issue with Republic in regards, and Republic, uh, waste services in regards to our alleyways. Uh, if you haven't already received a notice, you will be receiving a notice in the next few days from Republic, uh, explaining exactly, uh, first of all, that the original notice would, did not come from the city, did not come from the Minnesota Department of Transportation. Uh, but then also outlining exactly who needs to move and also that some, uh, some residents do not need to move their carts due to having paved alleyways and hills, uh, that affect their ability to move their, their carts to the front as opposed to the alley. So I believe we have that finally all cleared up. Uh, if anyone ever had, or if anyone continues to have issues with, with Republic, please don't hesitate to call city staff. Just a quick comment on the mayor's, uh, the, the Senate housing, uh, the Senate and House housing bills that are going in that are really looking to wrest local control from all elected leaders, uh, and try to also determine, uh, what we can inspect and not inspect, among other things. And, and, and the, and, and, and then we also, of course, have the ancillary concern in regards to development fees or, or being able to make development pay for itself as opposed to taxpayers footing that bill. Some of these bills just think that if, if they say it doesn't, uh, if, if the cities can't charge for it, that this, that the action behind it won't occur. And the reality is, we still have a responsibility to protect the health, well, health, welfare and safety of our residents, and we will still have to perform these functions. We just can't charge developers for it if, if these bills come through. And if that's the case, then the taxpayers will have to foot the bill. And, and it's striking to see, uh, members of the House and Senate, uh, who used to champion local control, now appear to be uh, looking to assist developers and getting houses done, uh, and, and padding the developers' pockets. I find, I find that extremely stressful. Uh, and, uh, you know, as an administrator, looking at the future, if that happens, uh, our taxes will go up exponentially due to the fact that we're still gonna have to pay for these services that we're providing. Mr. Greg Drenth, the interim, uh, SPU manager, and I will be meeting, uh, on Thursday to discuss uh, when we can have a joint meeting. Uh, we will also be talking about topics for joint presentation between the both of us. Uh, I think that, uh, one of the topics, I think we will have them talk about is the water plan for the West End. It seems to be timely. Uh, but we're hoping to have, uh, a, a joint meeting with SPU, uh, in the next, next month or so. So, uh, look forward to that. We will try to get some dates, uh, solidified and then get those dates out to you and then figure out, uh, who can attend. And finally, my last update is, is that, uh, with some degree of, of, of sadness, but yet really excited for Nate Burkett, our current assistant city administrator, who, uh, has uh, been offered the job at West St. Paul, uh, to be their city manager. So, uh, he's in the process of negotiating with them. Uh, uh, I think Nate will be around with us probably for another four weeks or so, uh, if he does. If he does eventually work out that agreement. Uh, Nate has been an outstanding deputy. Uh, you know, I've, I've talked at length before about, uh, you know, the importance of having someone as a deputy who is not you, uh, that, that basically fills in the spaces where you're weak, uh, and allows, uh, then, uh, you to also assist in those areas that, that they, uh, need assistance on. And so, uh, I think Nate and I have, uh, made an excellent team over the years. I am sorry to see him go, but I'm excited for him in the future, uh, because I know that, uh, he will do an outstanding job. Uh, and with that, that is my report.
Uh, Mr. Reynolds, thank you very much. And, uh, that news about, uh, our assistant city administrator, Nate Burkett, uh, great opportunity for him, but, uh, I do believe that, uh, if he moves forward, we would lose a great asset to our community. He's done a lot of stuff behind the scenes that, uh, on a day-to-day basis that, uh, help our community. And, uh, but again, um, an opportunity for him, um, professionally. And, uh, uh, so I salute, salute to him. With that, uh, moving on then to nine eight, or, uh, item number ten, other business? Is there any other business? Counselor Contreras?
Mayor, thank you. I just have a quick question, and I don't exactly know who to direct it to. I just, um, wanted to see what's the status on our workshop that we had on the rental housing program? Just wanted to know if there's a, you know, if, if we're still, if, um, staff's still working on it and what's the status? I do have a couple constituents who have asked, um, because it, like their, their apartment's fixed.
Update? My call?
Mayor and council, our plan is to move forward in two phases. So the first phase will be the bring forward to you a property maintenance ordinance. And then once that gets passed, we will come back with the rental housing ordinance. So, um, I think we're looking at, to bring that ordinance to you sometime either in April or first meeting in May.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, other business, I would like to bring something up, uh, with, with this opportunity and maybe some hope coming forward here in regard to this COVID. Uh, the governor has set out, uh, a date in April. Um, let's all get back together in council. I think, uh, I'd like to do that on April twentieth. That would be, uh, aligned with, uh, the, the, a little more of the loosening that the governor has allowed here, that some of it, uh, went in effect last week and another round on the sixteenth. But, uh, I would like to see us all get back together here in council in person. I think the Zoom has been a great technology, but there's no replacement for direct conversation, uh, as we work through the issues of the city. And, uh, would like to target April twentieth to come back to chambers. Counselor Brennan?
Um, I would agree with that. Um, I, um, that's something that the SPU was also discussing. Um, is how to bring staff and, and the county, uh, commission back into the chamber. Um, so I would support that also with the city council.
Others? Counselor Whiting?
No, I think as long as we are maintaining social distance and, uh, all those protocols, I think that's fine. Um, we'll have to rearrange some seats, but, uh, you know, we can do it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Contreras?
I'm okay with it too, as long as, you know, we do, um, still keep our protocols. Yeah, should be good.
Counselor Lehman, you wanna weigh in?
Um, I'm easy either way. Um, I, nobody really knows where it's gonna go. Too many variants and nobody knows what the vaccines are capable of.
Okay.
It would be nice if government knew what they were doing, but uh, we've got a, we've got a vaccine, but we don't know if it's successful or not. We don't know if it covers all these variants. We, we don't know nothing. We, we don't know if it's.
When we can get it?
You know, yeah. So, you know, one thing's for sure, you gotta live.
That is right. What I'm trying to do is create some, a little sense of normalcy. We've gone through a very difficult year, both, uh, in our community, our businesses, and as, as people, right? Um, I see hope coming. Um, I know, I talked to other mayors and they're backing councils. Um, I think my idea, I know we've had this question come up before with our city administrator by email, but I thought I would address it directly to the council. Uh, April twentieth, over a month away. That would be our target date. I, from what I'm hearing is, it sounds like that's consensus. Um, let's just target that date, um, and see what happens here over the next many weeks. All right, um, any other business before this council? Otherwise, we can move forward here?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, April sixth, twenty twenty-one at seven P M.
Whiting, second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, further discussion? Discussion, discussion by voice vote. Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. We stand adjourned here at the city council at ten o'clock. Thank you all.